Everybody to have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are, I'm sorry, Sidney's not here. Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosehacker, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, PJ Butler of City Planning, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. (cough) Excuse me. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. And with that said, I'll get started on the consent cases. Agenda item number two, case C three twenty-two dash one nineteen. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of Amendment to the Present Development Zone of the City's Master Plan. Location: City of Omaha and the Three Mile Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number four, case C three dash twenty-two dash one twenty-one. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of the Industrial on Fort Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location: Twelve fifteen Fort Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nine, case C twelve dash twenty-two dash one twenty-five. Applicant, Nick Brenner, Menard, Inc. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary Plat Approval of Menard Subdivision Replat Six, a subdivision inside city limits. Location: Northwest of Two Hundred and Fifth Street and Cumberland Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number ten, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one twenty-six. C ten dash twenty-two dash one twenty-seven. C twelve dash twenty-two dash one twenty-eight. Applicant, Todd Lieberman, Brynshaw Development. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary Plat Approval of Kennedy Square East, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R seven and CC to R seven and CC along with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Northeast of Thirty First Street and Spencer Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eleven, case C ten dash five dash one forty-four. C twelve dash five dash one forty-five. Applicant, AVG CFM two oh four Q LLC, Attention J F Carter. It is on for approval. Request: Revised Preliminary Plat and Final Plat Approval of Coventry Lots One eighteen through one twenty, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and R four to MU along with approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Plan for Coventry South. Location: Northwest of Two Hundred and Fourth and Harrison Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twelve, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one thirty-four. C twelve dash twenty-two dash one thirty-five. Applicant, Falcone Land Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary Plat Approval of Calarosa, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R four. Location: Northeast of Two Hundred and Sixteenth Street and Mount Michael Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirteen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one forty-six. C twelve dash twenty-two dash one thirty-six. Did I say one forty-six the first time? Let me start over. C ten dash twenty-two dash one forty-six. C twelve dash twenty-two dash one thirty-six. Applicant, On six eighty Zone One LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and Final Plat Approval of Regency Landing, a minor plat inside city limits with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District along with a waiver to Section fifty-three eight four D Lot Frontage. Location: Northwest of Hundred and Seventh Ave and Pacific Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number fourteen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one oh nine. Applicant, Frank Bevins. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from CC to GI. Location: One oh nine thirty-five Mockingbird Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number fifteen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one thirteen. Applicant, Dalton Dozier. It is on for approval. Approval. Request: Rezoning from R four thirty-five to R five. Location: Thirty-one oh six South Third Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number sixteen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one sixteen. Applicant, Timothy Binock. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R four thirty-five to R five. Location: Twenty-one oh six South Forty-second Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, we will remove that. Okay, thank you, sir. Continuing on, agenda item number seventeen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Applicant, Fraser Martis Architects. On for approval. Request: Rezoning from AG to DR. Property is located within an ED Environmental Resource Overlay District. Location: One oh four thirty-five North Eighty-four Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nineteen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one thirty-eight. C ten dash twenty-two dash one thirty-nine. Applicant, Ralston Public Schools. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R three to R four with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: Fifty-one hundred South Ninety-third Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-one, case C eleven dash twenty-one dash three three four. Applicant, Bruce Yoder, Matt Smith. On for approval. Request: Approval of a Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: Southeast of Thirty-Eighth Ave and Dodge Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one twelve. Applicant, Mount Maria Missionary Baptist Church. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Twenty-six oh two North Twenty-four Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-three, case C ten dash twenty-two dash fifteen. Applicant, Fifty-two thirteen Leavenworth LLC, Care of Investors Realty. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: Fifty-two oh three and Fifty-two thirteen Leavenworth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one seventeen. Applicant, M eleven Blondo LLC. Is on for approval. Request: Approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: Southwest of Hundred and Ninety-second Street and Grant Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C eleven dash twenty-two dash one twenty-nine. C seven dash twenty-two dash one forty-nine. Applicant, Todd Lieberman, Brynshaw Development. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District along with approval of a Conditional Use Permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC District. Location: Northeast of Thirty First Street and Spencer Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-six, case C eleven dash twenty-two dash one forty-one. Applicant, Todd Lieberman, Brynshaw Development. Is on for layover. Request: Approval of a Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: Northeast of Thirty First Street and Spencer Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-seven, case C eleven dash twenty dash one hundred. Applicant, Dan Merrick. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: Southwest of Forty-fourth and Douglas Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-eight, case C eleven dash twenty-two dash one thirty-seven. Applicant, Contrivium Design Eddie Santa Maria. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: Two fifteen Cedar Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty, case C eight dash twenty-two dash one fourteen. Applicant, High Tech Towers, Inc. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a Special Use Permit to allow a broadcast tower in the CC District with a waiver to Section fifty-five three sixty-six height to allow a two hundred and eighty-five foot tall tower. Location: Seven ninety-nine North Skyline Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-one, case C eight dash twenty-two dash one eighteen. Applicant, Carthel Sherrill, Jr. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a Special Use Permit to allow small group living, non-disabled in the R four thirty-five district. Location: Forty-five twenty-seven North Thirty-seventh Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-three, case C eight dash seventeen dash thirty-seven. C ten dash twenty-two dash one forty. Applicant, Candace Price. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Special Use Permit to allow automotive sales in the CC District along with the approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: Southwest of Sixtieth Street and Sorensen Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-four, case C seven dash sixteen dash one eighty. Applicant, Rich Burton, Arrow Architecture. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to a Conditional Use Permit to allow veterinary services in the LC District. Location: Eleven thirteen North Seventy-second Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-five, case C fourteen dash twenty-two dash one forty-two. Applicant, Planning Board. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the East-West Alley right-of-way between Forty-sixth Street and Forty-eighth Street and between Dodge, (cough) excuse me, Dodge and Douglas Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. And finally, agenda item number thirty-six, case C fourteen dash twenty-two dash one forty-three. Applicant, Planning Board. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the East-West Alley right-of-way between Forty-second Street, Forty-first Ave, and between L and K Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for the consent cases that are on for approval?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda items number two, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
Did you say ten?
I did not, ten, tend to.
Add ten to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items that are on for layover?
Motion to layover cases four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Okay, those cases that were on consent, no further action will be taken today. If you were here for one of those cases, you are welcome to stay, you are welcome to leave, it's up to you, but no further action will be taken on any of those cases. Thank you for coming down. Okay, the first case is administrative meeting only. Means no opportunity for public testimony unless a Board member or Planning Department member calls you forward. Agenda item number one, case C ten dash eighteen dash two forty-seven. C twelve dash eighteen dash two forty-eight. Applicant, Blondo one eighty LLC. Request: Final Plat Approval of Blue Stem Meadows, lots one ten through one fourteen, Outlots H through J, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location: Northwest of Hundred and Eightieth and Blondo Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is the second phase of Blue Stem Meadows. It includes five mixed-use lots and three outlots within twenty-two point five acres. There is an updated recommendation report that was provided to the Planning Board members that was updated a couple of days ago after further coordination with the applicant and Public Works Department. The plan is consistent with the approved revised preliminary plat. There are a few mixed-use comments and a few access restrictions within the report. I would open up the opportunity for the applicant to come down if they have the desire to speak. I know they're a little bit on the fence, but I will just throw that out there after I give my recommendation. If they would like to speak, I'd be willing to hear from them. If they don't want to, then I'll leave that up to them. I will give the recommendation, and then we can have further conversation or questions if necessary. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the three conditions in the report prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Okay, did you want to add anything? Give your name and address, please, sir.
Kyle Vole, E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm the civil engineer on the project. I appreciate working with Public Works and Planning on the project thus far. Can we get the overhead on? Kyle, could you pull the mic? There we go. So what we're looking at is the northwest corner of Hundred and Eightieth and Blondo. In the recommendation report, there's a condition ten regarding the elimination of access for a right-in condition at Galloway Street. So Hundred and Eightieth Street is the north-south street here. This Hundred and Eightieth and Blondo has been built to the ultimate section, so there is a median at the intersection of Hundred and Eightieth and Galloway. So this is not a signalized, this is a right-in southbound on Hundred and Eightieth. And then we have a median in Galloway Street. What we're asking for is the opportunity to continue to work with Planning and Public Works for this right-in movement that would be off of Galloway north into, I think that's lot one twelve, yes, lot one twelve. So we've constructed a, the district, this is an SID project, we've constructed a southbound right D cell lane with Hundred and Eightieth Street, so we would have an unrestricted movement for right-in, right-in into the parking area here for the retail. So just asking for the opportunity to continue to work with Public Works and Planning on that, on that access. The condition currently as written says working with Public Works and planning, but then there's also a comment that the plat would need to show a no access off of Galloway to a hundred, to lot one thirteen and, yeah, one twelve and one thirteen. So I'd like to revise that so we would have the opportunity for access to lot one twelve. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Did you want to address that, Eric, or do we want to call Ryan? Okay. Ryan Haas, Public Works, would you come up and address the request from Kyle on the
Ryan Haas with Public Works. The preliminary plat had a condition of approval to continue working or coordinating with potential for access from Hundred and Eightieth First Street here to this multifamily lot and the potential for this access here. We did agree to conditional approval of the preliminary plat to continue those discussions at that time. The rec report now reflects that we did, because it's multifamily, which generates fewer trips, lower trip generation intensity, we are supportive of allowing this access here. So this would be reflected in the mixed-use plan and with the notes on the plat. However, this access here to the commercial lot, it was determined that we, as a matter of policy in the recent ten to fifteen years, that's something that we have moved away from allowing on these street connections immediately off of the arterials. And so with that in mind, the recommendation of Public Works Department is to have that access removed from the mixed-use plan and have the plat prohibition note added there as we've consistently applied on other similar mixed-use developments.
Ryan, question for you. So what, I don't really see any problems with allowing the access personally, I really don't, but can you tell us how many feet or how many car lengths there is between that intersection there or that Hundred and Eightieth Street and that entryway into that commercial development?
Just based off, based off of the stalls, which would be twenty-foot stalls up here, I'm going to, I'm going to approximate, plus your I'm going to, I'm going to approximate, plus your drive lane, twenty, twenty, forty, we're probably looking at approximately eighty to eighty-five feet, it looks like.
In the, for...
So you would, you would have stacking, four to five car stacking on Galloway before it would back up...
Before it gets to Hundred and Eightieth Street?
Before the right-decel lane southbound on Hundred and Eightieth.
Yeah. And what, while you're, again, maybe a question, follow-up question for the applicant here. So what kind of businesses do you, I see a restaurant particularly, or a fast-food restaurant potentially in there, but what kind of other businesses do you anticipate being occupants in that sense?
It's a retail strip. The end cap is the South Bay, which has the potential drive-through. Now, there are some other comments in the, in the rec report which we're comfortable with on trying to bring more storefrontage to Hundred and Eighty-first, so that might change that layout somewhat, but yeah, right now it's a retail strip, so six retail bays. It's spec at this point, so we don't know for sure.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only type of business I think that might create a logjam of cars would be, I don't know, maybe not, but restaurants, like a, like a sit-down restaurant, necessarily a fast-food restaurant, but a restaurant that would be pretty popular, could become pretty popular, but I don't know if the center is laid out properly for something like that, maybe it is, but...
It's a one-acre retail pad site, just to give you a feel for the size.
How much?
One acre, is that a lot?
So that's not that big, then?
Right.
Yeah.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, no, no, I, no, I'll just make the comment. I don't, I don't personally see it a problem because the traffic, if you've got the, if you've got the median in there, the, which will allow only just right-in and right-out, plus the traffic that's only going to be able to come in from that direction is going to be coming from the north-south, I don't think it's going to create too much traffic in there. Now, I know, Ryan, some of the things that you've talked about before is, but that's now, you know, what about the future? As long as that median's still on Hundred and Eightieth Street, I think there's a median, there's going to be a median there on Hundred and Eightieth, is there not?
Right there, that's correct. That's in place currently.
Cars can't go left out of there anyway, or they can't come in from the south into that area. I just don't know that there's going to be that much traffic to...
So just to expand a little bit, the, the purpose of these street connections to the arterial, from our standpoint, is the unimpeded traffic flow into and out of the development. The, the access is really most appropriate on these local streets you see here, in this case Hundred and Eighty-first. We're perfectly willing to work with the applicant on, just around the corner here, on Hundred and Eighty-first Street, because that's further into the development where we have, start to introduce the friction and the turning movement.
Don't get me wrong, I totally, I totally understand where you're coming, I totally do, but I'll tell you from a personal experience, the business I owned and had, I had problems with the same type of situation like this, and I heard nothing but complaints from my customers about that. So I'm a little bit sympathetic because it really wasn't a big deal, I don't think at that time, and I really don't think it's a big deal now. So if you can continue to maybe work with the applicant on this to see if you can work out a suitable situation, I'd like to see that done personally.
So if I could just jump in for a moment, as far as procedure, we would not support a condition that says continue to coordinate because that just puts us and city staff in a difficult position. So, you know, we're supportive of the recommendation report as it's proposed. If you were looking at changing, you would, we would recommend that you strike that condition or keep it in as is. We can go on the record and say, yes, we'll continue to coordinate, you know, in between now and City Council, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Very good, I appreciate that.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Eric, did you want to add any more?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion then. I'll make the motion, the approval of the rezoning from AC to DR and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the top two, the first two conditions, number one and two, prior to forwarding the request on to City Council.
Do we have a second? Okay, we don't have a second, do we have another motion?
I'll make the motion for the approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to a submittal of an acceptable, acceptable mixed-use development agreement, apologize. Approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the following three conditions prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
No.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve four to two.
Okay. Moving on, agenda item number three. Case C three dash twenty-two dash one twenty. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Dizzy Mule Tiff redevelopment project plan. Location northeast of Thirteenth and Izzard Streets. And Don, you're up.
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. The Dizzy Mule Tiff project plan is located northeast of Thirteenth and Izzard. It's in the northern part of downtown in the Millwork Common Redevelopment District, kind of north of the TD Ameritrade Ballpark. The project involves an L-shaped development site comprised of four parcels. Three of the parcels are vacant, one contains an existing brick historic building. The project site is within the, is within a National Register Historic District. The historic building will be fully rehabbed as part of this project, and there'll be new construction, this, this will be the historic building, new construction attached to each, either side, the east and west sides of the building. The development will function as a single building, but it's been designed to look more like six buildings, kind of break up the mass and fit in with the character of the area. Again, it's this L-shaped area here, there's an activated alley, which is essentially a, going to be a, intended to be kind of a vibrant pedestrian area. The project is a large mixed-use building, about five stories in height. It'll be a hundred seventy-two market rate apartment units, and those will be located above some first-floor retail of about eighteen thousand square feet, commercial retail space. Property is being developed by a partnership of Bluestone Development, managed by Deborah and Christian Christensen, and Black Dog Development, managed by Paul G. Smith. Total investment in this portion of north downtown is approximately thirty-four million five hundred ninety thousand dollars. The applicants have requested Tiff support in the amount of four million nine hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Couple more perspective renderings. The project meets the required criteria of the city's Tiff program. It's an appropriate land use for the area. It's been approved by the city's Tiff committee and complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Bob Griffith, one-one-four-four-zero, West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Don, city staff, for presenting, did a great job as usual. I only can only add that the project is also incorporating certain public improvements in the amount of about three hundred fifty thousand. This includes street and utility improvements, landscaping and lighting, significant upgrades, as well as some additional curb and cement right-of-way improvements. There will be additional jobs added, three permanent, to manage the apartment facility, as well as significant new employment with the commercial aspect on the first floor. With that, I'm here to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional questions, comments from the board? Eric?
Yeah, I was just going to add, with this property being in the Nicholas Street Historic National District, we appreciate sitting down with the applicant and continuing conversations as far as the design of the buildings and, you know, the best fit for this area, so we appreciate that. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six-zero.
Agenda item number five. Case C three dash twenty-two dash one forty-four. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of amendment to, to chapter fifty-five regarding floodplain regulations and exemptions of maximum permitted sound. Location, City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Eric?
Yeah, so this proposed text amendment deals with chapter fifty-five, which is our zoning code. One of the primary items is related to floodplain regulations. Then there are a few others dealing with an exemption for maximum permitted sound, dealing with emergency generators, and then there are a few editorial fix for a few other sections. Just to be brief, as we are going to recommend layover, the floodplain regulation change, you know, we've been working with some local business owners and, and looking at how we treat current existing properties in the floodplain and how we track improvements or damages. So just a brief summary is, we are looking at modifying, tracking cumulative substantial improvements to cumulative substantial damages. And, and basically, that's just two different methods of tracking the valuation and improvements made to a property versus tracking the damages that have been made to a property as a result of flood or other calamity. Last night, we received some correspondence with one of the local businesses that we have been coordinating with, and based on some commentary and, and potential preferred modifications, we think it's necessary to lay this over so that we can meet internally as a staff and also work with our partners, which are FEMA, State of Nebraska, and the NRD. We need to make sure that any changes to the floodplain requirements are approved by those entities and partners so that we are in good standing with the National Flood Insurance Program. So based on some of those commentary that we received last night, we think it's, it's most beneficial to take a step back and to analyze and have further discussions on that, so I anticipate this coming back to the board in the, in the future. But I will leave it at that, you can open it up for...
Thank you, Eric. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add any more?
Just recommend layover.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six-zero.
Moving on, agenda item number six. Case C three dash twenty-two dash one forty-five. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location twenty-four twenty-seven, twenty-four twenty-five, and twenty-four seventeen Ohio Street. Eric?
Yeah, so we have received a, a request from an individual party to purchase these three city-owned properties totaling about one-third of an acre located in the southeast, southeast corner of Twenty-fifth and Ohio Street. These are currently vacant properties. The request, the requesting party is Don L. Brown. He has provided information and general layout. He would like to build single-family homes on these vacant lots. So I will open it up for the public hearing.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six-zero.
Agenda item number seven. Case C ten dash twenty-two dash one-ten. C twelve dash twenty-two dash one-eleven. Applicant Andrew Burshild. It is on for, the request is preliminary and final plat approval of Burshild Subdivision, a minor plat outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe overlay district. Location two forty-six forty-five Pacific Street. Hear from the applicant, please.
Andrew Burshild, two four six four five Pacific Street. I am the owner of the property. All I would like to do is, so I own this section all right here. I need, I would like to subdivide to separate my existing house, and so I can build my new house right here. It's eighteen acres. Since it's under eighteen acres, I have to rezone to residential, so that is what I'm trying to do.
I missed it? What did you say?
I would just like to, to subdivide the property.
Yeah, I heard that. I thought at the end I missed what you said.
Oh, I'm just, that's all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Andrew? Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so we did not include this on the consent agenda because we have a split recommendation, and, and I'll explain that further. We cannot recommend approval of the final plat at this time when, when we deal with lots that are less than three acres in size. The State of Nebraska requires, when it has a septic system, I should say, the State of Nebraska requires pre-approval when that lot is less than three acres in size. So, so with the smaller lot being a little over two acres, we are recommending layover of the final plat. You'll have to make a, an application to the State of Nebraska so that they can review that that smaller lot has acceptable, you know, septic system, coverage, and laterals, and, and all of their requirements. So there's also an item with the, the barn, there's, there's a couple criteria that will have to be met, either it's too close to the proposed lot line, so we'll either need the lot line adjusted, or the removal of the barn, or potentially a ZBA waiver. So just wanted to point that out. There's no business activity that is allowed on this site, it would be rezoned DR. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report, and layover of the final plat.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR. Approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the seven recommendations in the staff report, and layover of the final plat.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six-zero.
Agenda, agenda item number eight. Case C ten dash twenty-two dash seventy-eight. C twelve dash twenty-two dash seventy-nine. Applicant Gotch Holdings, Brett Gotch Trust. Request preliminary plat approval of Legato, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R four and MU. Location northeast of Two Hundred and Fourth and Harrison Streets.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Johnson. My address is one hundred and fourteen forty, one hundred and fourteen forty, West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Gotch Holdings. Also with me today is Jeff Jackson from Gotch Holdings. Proposed project before you relates to the sixty-eight acre parcel property located on the northeast corner of Highway six and Harrison Streets. The preliminary plat for Legato includes fifty-five single-family lots and thirteen mixed-use lots that are here and here, and these two here are slated for multifamily use, and the other eleven are, will be used for retail, commercial, or office uses. And there are also seven outlots with this preliminary plat. The applicant is in agreement with all the comments and conditions set forth in the recommendation report, and we look forward to working through those comments and conditions as we progress through the process. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have any other proponents? Seeing none, do we have any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add?
Yeah, you know, we discussed this quite a bit in the pre-meeting. You know, I don't need to go into a lot of the details. There is unlimited amount of multifamily allowed within a quarter mile of Two Hundred and Fourth Street, which this project is taking advantage of. We appreciate... We appreciate that density along a state highway such as this. We also talked about the different ways that the project is meeting the quarter-mile gap or in conjunction with the adjacent project. There's about three different ways. So if you have any questions on that, I could absolutely answer them. We have pretty standard mixed-use comments in the, the report that is customary when we have a preliminary plat and a mixed-use plan. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R four, and MU subject to submission of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the thirty-one conditions in the report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from AG to DR, R four and MU, subject to submission of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the thirty-one items in the staff report. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
I think we're moving forward to agenda item number sixteen, which was on consent and taken off. Is case C ten dash twenty-two dash one sixteen. Applicant Timothy Benoch. It was on for approval, taken off. Request rezoning from R four thirty-five to R five. Location, twenty-one oh six South Forty-second Street is the applicant here.
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Tim Benoch, addresses three six four seven, South Forty-fourth Ave. Thank you for the opportunity today. I would just like to reemphasize that this request from R four to R five is, it does maintain the city's vision for future land use. And further, all along Forty-second Street, there, there is, sorry, right here. On the other side of Francis Street, there is a mixed-use apartment building up and down Forty-second Street. It is, the zoning is varied. There's duplexes up and down. There's a lot of commercial property. And then lastly, in regards is to the special information that the lots with doesn't adhere to what the proposal is. And, and with your approval today, that's something that hopefully will allow me to go in front of the zoning appeals to address that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Scott Swancutt. I live at twenty-one thirteen South Forty-third Street. My biggest problem, if you look at Forty-second Street, is all the access are off of the Forty-second Street where there are driveways and that sort of thing. His plan that he sent off, oops, sorry, his plan that he sent off has a thirty-by-forty-foot driveway going straight back to the alley. Forty-second Street is sloped in such a way, the storm drain from that property is going to be the backyards of the neighbors behind him. Just the last time that they let somebody dig up the alley down at twenty-one twenty, it's flooded out people's basements that are on Forty-third Street just because of the way he dug it and the way the drainage changed from the way the alley's always been. And I've been there twenty-nine years. I just think it's a mistake. The rezoning thing does, a lot of his plans don't fit with that plot. That's, that's my problem.
Okay.
I'm one house away from where it's going to be developed. And what's happened with, when twenty-one twenty, whoever flipped that house on Forty-second Street, and I can show you Forty-second if you want to see that. He dug up the alley, which changed the drain pattern or the way that the alley drained out. Which, I don't know if it, which does affect him with this dirt here. And he just left a pile. Well, now the water comes down. It's washing out part of the alley now in my back hill. And it's now actually flooding my neighbor's basement. He's getting watered up just because someone dug up the alley with, as far as I knew, no approval. I never got anything from the city planning department when he did that back in twenty-twenty. But I look at this and just the way the alley's sloped with these plans, it's just gonna, his storm drain is gonna be the basement of the houses directly behind him. So that's, if you could stop until he comes up with a better clue and goes back to Forty-second Street, I'd appreciate it. I'm sure my neighbors do, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Is there any problem right now from, from that property?
Are you experiencing any problem with runoff on, on that property now?
That property, yes, man. He wants to use the alley for the entrance to the property. If you've looked at the way his, his access is, and he's gonna put a driveway thirty-by-forty foot, which is all
Concrete.
All concrete. And it's just, the runoff is gonna come straight down into people's, there's no drainage there right now. And like I said, since, what happened in twenty-twenty during the pandemic, when I got dug up the alley and changed everything, I mean, it's actually starting to wash out. My hill's washing away. It's just stupid. And as far as I know, he had no approval.
And there were no issues before that happened?
Not, not like it is now. I mean, the water used to run down there. My neighbor said that since that started the flooding, he started getting water in his basement. Since that was changed with the previous flipper on Forty-second Street. But I just feel like if he's gonna do this and just concrete all the way down there, we're just a floodplain. Where's drain? So I, I think his access should be on Forty-second Street. Sorry, I'm not a professional.
That's okay. No, you're good.
Thank you, Scott. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Tim, did you wanna? Where's Tim at? Tim, did you want to come up and take the opportunity to address any of Scott's concerns?
If I may.
Name and address again.
Sorry. Tim Benoch, thirty-six forty-seven, South Forty-fourth Ave. If I may, the plan, we're not digging up the alley at all. I'm not touching the alley. My proposed driveway ends right at the alley. But I understand your discussion about that and we'll talk to you after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Eric, did you want to add to the drainage discussion?
Yeah, so, so we currently have a platted lot with the R four thirty-five zoning. Of course, the request before us is to, to change to R five, which does allow the duplex use type, which the R four existing zoning does not allow. As Tim had mentioned, he has the hopes to go to the zoning board of appeals. It's correct that the zoning code requires a sixty-foot wide for a duplex. But rezoning this to R five doesn't lock in place that it has to be built as a duplex. So R five is considered low-density residential, which is master plan compliant. Therefore, we are supportive of the rezoning request. You know, the next steps to try to get that duplex, that's a separate process. You know, we, we receive the site plans. We, we look at the floor plans and the site plans. We don't review that for zoning compliance when you have a rezoning because that, that plan can change. As far as the erosion or the drainage, there are building permit requirements and building codes that are applicable in the construction of single-family residential or duplex residential, trying to prevent the, you know, sometimes there's silt fences and there's specific requirements that aren't part of the zoning code. So, you know, the, whatever is built ultimately on this property will be subject to the codes that we have in our chapter forty-three building code requirements. If, if those are not being followed and a, and a neighbor has complaints or want us to, to look into it, we can send out an inspector. So we encourage if, you know, if during the building process, those applicable codes aren't being followed, that, you know, that we hear from the surrounding property owners. But aside from, I guess regarding the access, it's not ideal with the number of driveways off of Forty-second Street and these arterials that is pretty consistent with older parts in our city. That's not how we set up neighborhoods, you know, when we, when we go through new development proposals. But it is what it is. I believe with this being a platted lot, they would have the right to access Forty-second Street. But we are fully supportive of, of taking access from the rear off of, off of the alley. So I guess, I don't know if that answers the questions, but we do have grading and erosion controls in place with the building codes. The request is master plan compliant, so we're recommending approval.
Any additional comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sod Longo? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Agenda item number eighteen, case C ten dash twenty-two dash one-thirty, C ten dash twenty-two dash one-thirty-one, C eleven dash twenty-two dash one-thirty-two, C seven dash twenty-two dash one-thirty-three. Applicant AVG Partners One LLC. Request approval of a rezoning from LI to CC along with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district, approval of a major commercial corridor overlay district, and approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple residential in the CC district. Location, twenty-seven eighteen North One Eighteenth Street. Applicant, please.
Hello, Brian Acker, one-one-nine South Forty-ninth Avenue. I'm here representing the applicant. I've got a few drawings here just kind of outline what we're doing here. So it is a very atypical five-over-one or four-over-one multifamily residential project. There's currently an old twenty-four Fitness Building that's been sitting vacant for about four years now. So looking at this, this ALTA survey here, one-hundred-and-twentieth Street is located over here on the west side. Hundred-and-eighteenth Street and the North Park Business Park is located over here on the right. There is single-family residential across one-hundred-and-twentieth Street. And then the rest of the surrounding uses are a lot of commercial office as well as retail. And there's also hospitality hotel just directly to the south. So as you can see, there is an existing building located here. There's also a large surface lot over on the east side of the site. What this project is doing is actually taking a lot of the existing shell of the building and reutilizing it for parking as well as amenity space for some of the multifamily residential that's being integrated into this project here. So the, the site plan here, you can see this here is where the existing building was. We're also doing another addition over onto the east side of the parcel. So that would all be new construction for more parking stalls to hit a hundred-and-fifty parking stalls inside the building and then also a hundred-and-fifty units above. We are looking forward to working with planning on some of the exterior materials. That was one thing that was in the recommendation report. As far as what the exterior cladding is, we do have some metal panel and fiber cement integrated into there. But there are different levels of that and some different levels of primary materials that we do need to get incorporated into the building structure. Digital material board here. And then here's some renderings of the one-hundred-and-eighteenth Street side. So again, the, the main area here is where the existing building is. And then this addition is built out into the existing surface lot over on the east side. This is also facing one-hundred-and-twentieth Street. So the existing gymnasium is actually located here in this. We'd be painting the building out, so it's all the same form. But anything that's shown kind of this gray color here is, is that existing building. There's also an existing pool on the inside of the building that we're looking to reutilize as well. That's located over here. And some of that housing is located above the gym as well as above the, the rest of the building itself. So I'm here to answer any other questions as well. So forward to anybody's thoughts.
Thank you, Brian. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Kyle, excuse me, Kyle Hazy, E&amp;A Consulting Group, one-oh-nine-oh-nine Mill Valley Road. We are the engineer for the site. Just wanted to add to Brian's presentation that we did have a neighborhood meeting. And at that neighborhood meeting, we had one couple that showed up to, I think they had some concerns at the beginning, but once the project was discussed to them and explained, they felt more comfortable when they left. You know, apartments always draw that initial concern. So I just wanted to add that to the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that we think this is a great reuse of a, of the property that's been vacant for a while. Challenging, I'm sure. But, you know, we think it's great to be able to provide more houses in this area and kind of unique infill project. I, I guess you don't usually think of one-hundred-and-twentieth and Blondo as the infill, but that's where we are and, and that's exactly what this project is. So we're encouraged to work with the applicant on finalization of the building materials and a few other items in the recommendation report. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from LI to CC, approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the PUR subject to submission of acceptable final PUR plans prior to city council, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the CC district subject to the following seven conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from LI to CC, approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the PUR subject to submission of acceptable final PUR plans prior to forwarding to city council, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the CC district subject to the seven conditions in the report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Agenda item number twenty, case C ten dash one dash two forty. Applicant Ayers and Ayers Inc. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Pine Creek. Location, southwest of one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth and State Street. Can you hear from the applicant, please?
Yep. Hi, I'm Richard Hawks with Arc etc. and Ayers and Ayers. We work together on this project. And going through, one of the things I want to point out, we understand this type of agreement is not really liked any longer by the city of Omaha. They're pretty much phased out, but it is what it is. And with some of the things that we were asking for, like the signage, is when the development first got done, this corner that we're looking at right here was initially planned as an office building, which might be three stories. I don't know when, how many tenants. But when they did the signage, it got really overly allocated to the big retail spot down here to the south. And what we were really asking for, I understand everything gets broken out. Then you try to pass it, pass it around from site to site. But with how it hasn't, no development has happened in that period of time, what we were really asking for was when they did the whole development, I know they did an allocated amount or allowable amount. And then they allocated that over the site. And it really got heavily allocated to three thousand one hundred and two square feet to the south retail area. And nothing's really happened with that. I know it's changed hands going back and looking through the records. So when we were asking for this to be a retail site, what we're looking on those two buildings is really about five total tenants. Each tenant roughly being about twenty-five hundred square feet right now. We have one building that's seventy-five hundred square feet, the other that's five thousand. And by going to the eight hundred, that roughly gives me just about another sixty square feet of sign. So a tenant can have one both on the major street site, State at one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth, and then maybe the additional towards the rest of the development out through the cul-de-sac. So we weren't really getting them that much more square footage of signage, but so we can give them some to make sure with this pretty much being the development happening at this time, they at least have some ability for signings so we don't have a strip mall with some vacant spaces. Because that's one thing they want to see too, is be seen with the signage. But we're not really asking for that much more. If I take the three hundred square feet divided by the five, I'm getting really about thirty square feet more on one side and thirty square feet more on the other side, close to that. Now with the, you know, recommendations on the material finishes, overall, we were fine. We submitted the smaller building and the elevations that you saw. And the smaller building with the siding and the brick was equal. But with all of them together, the brick and the metal are still about seventy percent of the square footage. The metal face on the top is another twenty-five percent in the siding in there. And we have no problem switching and working with the city with that, putting the metal And we have no problem switching and working with the city with that, putting the metal to the accent panels. This is just something we've used in the past and it kind of pops it out. And I think how it popped it out, it kind of put in everyone's head, well, that's the primary material. But when you do square footage, is the primary material fell within the guidelines of brick and those types of things. And that was kind of the major parts that we saw in there is really the signage part. We have addressed landscaping. We didn't submit, this was a prelim landscaping plan. And this is just for the seventy-five hundred square foot building. When we were starting the project, we were just going to do that one. And now with the tenants that he has, he's going to do both. And so we'd have a similar landscape plan to this, meeting their requirements. We've been working with our landscape supplier on meeting those needs, the forty-foot tree spacing, all the additional shrubs, all those types of things. And when it comes down to it, the mix in this development is really going to be based on, by the time we get the two buildings in there, they're going to have to really work with the parking requirements. I think we have like fifty-nine or sixty stalls. So you've got to be real careful what mix gets in there, no different than any other development. But I think it works out well with all the rooftops that have happened in the area. We get some development. And we all know this corner right here needs to be a green space. That's part of the agreement in the FAR. And then trying to get the, of course, the change in the floor area ratio is important with this being retail, single story versus an office being three-story. So that's really the comments I had with what I saw in the recommendations coming back. And I can answer any questions.
So, Richard, you have the two buildings. Do you know, maybe I missed it, how many bays?
There's going to be two buildings. The seventy-five hundred square foot will have three tenants, the five thousand will have two tenants.
So twenty-five hundred square feet for each bay?
Yep.
So with the requested eight hundred square foot in signage, what are you proposing basically to face south versus how much would face to the arterial streets?
I think it's going to be half and half.
Okay.
With how we designed it and the faces and similarity, I think they're going to put, want to put some signage to the street and the other half to the other. You're really not talking that much. If I get, if it's five hundred, each person gets a hundred square feet of signage. So they get fifty and fifty. If you get the eight hundred, you get another thirty square feet for each side for yourself. That's really what it comes down to.
Okay.
And I wouldn't see them, you know, some might heavy it towards the streets. But to me, I think more with this development and where the rooftops are and hitting that, you're trying to get both. Because a lot of the people to get here off one hundred and fifty-sixth, you've got to go down quite a ways to come back in, to come down to this corner. And the only thing that's really been developed there that I see was a daycare at this point in time. And that's off to the west. Correct. Yeah, we have not talked a monument sign or anything like that. Because really with, you'd want to put a monument sign probably right there on the corner, but that's where we have the landscaping and all that that's required. And there's a gas supply thing that sits there and power coming down. So there's a lot of things that, with that corner, I think we're more focused to make it a development that you come into.
Could you put up the sign exhibit for me again? Was that from two thousand three, two thousand five, whenever that was?
Yeah, this is from the two thousand three when the agreement was made. And so through the agreement, we found it was, there was an allowable that was calculated based on the street frontage. And then from there, they went back and did an allocation. And with our corner at that time being looked at as an office building, kind of got cheated with the signage. Because I think they were just thinking, oh, someone was put one sign on a three-story building and maybe it's one company. And so then they pushed the other to the south where they were planning all the retail that hasn't happened. Now, one time I heard, I think Walgreens was going in, but then I heard they weren't now. So I don't know, it's that setup for the south. And I know things with this type of situation, things get moved over here and all of a sudden you get a lot that you really can't do anything with because they've taken the signage out of it, they've taken the floor ratio out of it. And it's just a lot that happened because of an agreement that was done twenty years ago.
Is there a possibility that, I think you said that each, each building will have twenty-five hundred square foot bays?
Mm-hmm.
But is there a possibility that you may have one tenant in one building?
There's, there's that possibility. But I know right now with the mixes they're looking at, everyone's wanting about that twenty-five hundred. And that's how we set it up from like mechanical systems and those things. That's kind of a hit number that came from the marketing realtor and all that type of stuff. And I think right now they have it at least fifty, if not seventy-five percent leased.
Oh, do they?
Yeah. Because we even tried some other little designs, trying to maybe do some smaller buildings that would be drive-through, kind of a standalone. But we couldn't get enough stacking to make it be anything that would be like a fast food or that way. I think we came down to, we could maybe have a pharmacy or a small little coffee shop as long as we didn't get the stacking too big and stack out into the cul-de-sac. That was one of the concerns at that time. I think it's kind of a question if we're going to drive-through restaurants, no sit-downs anymore? What's going to happen after the pandemic?
Any other questions for Richard? Thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, you've been crunching some numbers.
Yeah, just taking, you know, Richard makes good points. You know, I, I guess we could, we would probably be concerned if there was, you know, just one tenant and they have this glut of signage. But I understand if you have five individual tenants within the two buildings that, yeah, I mean, the signage, it gets eaten up pretty, pretty quickly. And obviously, we, with the double frontage to the arterial streets and the, you know, where the cars are actually accessing, the businesses come from the south, I understand the need for on both sides. So I guess I'm looking at my director and, and seeing if he has any thoughts. Well, that's what we're considering. Obviously, we support the reduction in FAR. That's kind of an older model that we tried to utilize to get density. And sometimes the density is not always appropriate for every mixed-use center. So we're absolutely supportive of, of the reduction of the FAR. In fact, if the FAR was higher, we couldn't even park it. Like you had said, you already have challenges with what's being proposed. So Dave, I don't know if you have any thoughts?
So yeah, Dave Fambler, Planning Director, the conveniences of modern technology. Eric and I were texting back and forth a little bit when we started hearing the presentation. So two, well, I'll, let me mention one thing. We will have to track the uses closely as they come in for building permits because as we all know, a restaurant will gobble up a lot of that parking. So it's on us, it will be on us going forward, depending on who the users are here, to make sure that it can park itself. So the applicant, I think, made some good points about, you know, if there's five businesses, two and three, two and one building, three in the other, it, yeah, it doesn't sound like that much. Part of the conversation that Eric and I were having was, well, if one business takes up that entire building, then it could maybe not look so good, maybe not look so good. I'm going to look at Eric, having this conversation in public. I'm wondering if there's something we can do with limiting the signage along the arterials. If they, you know, so it doesn't look bad from the passing public, but if there, if there could be more signage interior where you don't really see it from the passing arterial. I don't know, this is new, so I don't know.
Can we pass, could we pass this with stipulation that he continues to work with the planning department on signage?
If you're comfortable doing that. I mean, but again, kind of like maybe the earlier case, if we don't come to a resolution, then it'll have to come back.
Yeah, and that's always the challenge when, you know, I, I don't know where they stand with their tenants or, or, you know, what the build-out phase of these buildings are.
Well, it sounds like they've already got some pre-leased tenants.
Let me say, add one thing. Those, sure, but those, with, with these tenant, with these bays, I could knock out a couple interior walls and you can have one user in that building.
I totally understand. But I think, I think the points are very valid and I, and I think you guys do too as well. And I'd like to be able to find some, some way to, to make this work for, for us and for the applicant as well. Because I don't think the request is unreasonable.
Maybe we could do something that would just say that we only allow the extension if it involves five tenants. If it falls below five tenants, it falls back to the original budget.
I'm not sure if we can legally do that as I look at law.
I was going to say, is that something that you guys can monitor also?
You know, I, I guess, as I was hearing the presentation and, you know, and seeing the disproportionate delegation of the signage from nineteen years ago to the, to the other lot. So there's going to be a lot that theoretically has a lot of signage that, that could be built. I don't know, you know, the status of that lot or anything like that. So maybe the, the increase for this site would, you know, make it a little more consistent with maybe their neighboring business whenever that's done. I don't know. Yeah, if you're, yeah. So, yeah, that's possible. Yeah. Richard had mentioned working with us on the final building materials. And absolutely, we'll work with him to make sure that primary and complementary materials are delegated for the, for the appropriate portions of the building. And there's a few other mixed-use items here that we'll have to finalize before going to city council. So I, you know, I want to be accommodating. I don't want it to have egregious, terrible, out-of-place signage. You know, I guess where that puts us is, is maybe we would...
Can I ask you a question though? What do you consider out-of-place signage? If these, if these signs are on the buildings and on each bay, to identify each tenant, I don't think that's out of place. So what do you consider out of place? Just, I'm just curious.
Well, signage calculation is, is very hard when you're just talking big picture. There's different types of signage, they're measured differently. So we're just trying to prevent unintended consequences, which is, which is difficult as you try to adapt on the fly here. And so, you know, it, it depends if it's channel letters, it depends if, if it's a logo and how that's all calculated. So I guess we just don't want, you know, a massively large sign that's out of place for a one-story building.
So do they have to get sign permits before they can?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So if I could add one more thing, typically when these centers build out and as, as the plans change, because they typically do from what we see, from the first use, first use, first mixed-use development agreement till final plans, we usually move that, we usually move that signage around from lot to lot. And we usually do cap it, right? So it's kind of on the developer or as they sell the lots to come in and stay close to with what that cap was for these mixed-use development agreements. So typically, we'll move that, again, we'll move that square footage around from lot to lot. But generally, we stay pretty close to what the agreement says. Because it, to tell the truth, it treats everybody equal and everybody knows what to expect. Just food for thought.
But there are exceptions.
There are always exceptions.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
How bad, I mean, is layover an option? Because I don't, I kind of...
Layover's always an option.
Well, I know. I mean, how, would you mind coming back open?
Patrick, if I can comment on that before the applicant comes back up. We had a recommendation report. We based our recommendation report on the information we had. I think we got new information or at least a new perspective today during this meeting. If, if our recommendation report's not going to be approved, I would, I would feel better having a layover so we can work with the applicant on, on maybe a solution. I don't know what that does to your timeline, but...
Well, like I said, they want me to have drawings and for permit us and...
We need your name and address again.
Richard Hawks, Arkey Cetra Ayers and Ayers, seventy-twenty-one L Street.
Thank you.
But my client would like to have drawings submitted if this is approved right away. And I would probably, pretty much everything done, probably ninety percent. Now I got to go back and make some changes because of materials. But other than that, and this is just for the shell portion of it. So we started getting those things because we've already ordered a lot of the materials. Because if you don't order them now, you may not get them for a year.
But you know where, I mean, other than signage, you kind of know where, where this recommendation report is. And so...
Correct. And we're fine with changing, you know, changing the materials. We can move the siding back if we need to. We're, we thought we were meeting the major because the brick is the most that's going to be there by probably seventy percent of the material will be brick and the metal and the glass. And so I was comfortable with that. But perception is always tough when you try to do an outcropping and it, that's what highlights the first thing everybody sees. So I have no problem with that. And then it was just the signage to try to come back through. And I can throw this out. One question we had with the owners is, is it, could it be something that's a percentage? You can say forty percent of their allocation is to the street and sixty percent's to the middle. That was another option. Instead of fifty-fifty, I just talked that way because it's kind of like, okay, it'd be nice to have it half and half. But if you do forty-sixty, so you reduce your chances of having any site to the major streets if that's what people are worried about.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in again. So it's mixed use. There's, the existing plan shows an office building, they want to convert it to commercial. Stay in one lot. I would, I would guess, I would, I would say we could probably, they're not, are they, are they taking, let me ask Eric, are they taking out the office requirement? Are they still meeting the office requirement?
I believe that's being met on a different lot.
Okay, so what we could do, and I'm thinking out loud here, is we could approve the plan, not the signs, the minor amendment, or allow it since they've met the office requirement on the other lots. So, so you could, so the applicant and their clients could take out the building permits and we could work on the signage, we could lay over the signage part and come back next month, not slowing up the construction unless Mike, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Really, the, the diagram that I'm showing you that was from the two thousand three really kind of says it's a three-story office slash retail. And I'm saying we're still going to probably have an office slash retail mix.
And what I'm saying is, we would probably approve the plan that, in my packet with the two buildings.
Okay.
The signage, and typically signage follows up after the building permit's submitted. So to your point...
Well, it'll follow up.
To your point, you could, you could apply for the building permit if we were okay with this plan as a minor amendment or just because it's, it is what it is because the office requirement is being met on another lot. You could submit for a permit for your, for your structures and we could loop back on the signage next month.
Correct, because the signage says that'd be addressed till after the building's built.
Correct.
It's just going to be a shell space.
Because there are usually two different permits.
Correct.
I think we got a solution here.
Okay.
Eric, did you want to make the, the recommendation?
Yeah, so, so with, with everything that was just said there, we will recommend layover of this specific major amendment. But of course, work with the applicant on building permit and avenues to keep going on work.
Recommend layover?
Just second.
Yeah, I want to...
I want to make sure, I'm not certain I...
Me too.
I'm understanding exactly what you just said here.
Well, I guess we can recommend approval as written in the report. That's with the five hundred square feet.
Well, the recommendation in the report is approval of the major amendment to the Pine Creek mixed-use development.
It is, but it refers back to the information in the report, which specifically does not support the increase in signage.
So by laying this over, he can, they can still go forward, still go through the permitting process, and we would lay over the signage?
That would be my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, that, I, I guess the, the one concern is, is the FAR component with, you know, minor amendment. So just trying to think this through now here. So this is why we don't go on the fly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, to me, the cleanest way to, to move forward is, is either, you know, laying it over and coming back next month or approving as the report is recommended. Now, that still doesn't increase the signage, but that is something that we can continue to work with them on.
That's a good point because if it's approved to get rid of the FAR...
Yeah, it's the two parts.
Then, don't, don't, don't approve the signage part and we'll come back with the signage.
Yeah.
You could approve the FAR building change today. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're, like, again, we're shooting from the hip here. But you could approve the plan, but not approve the sign budget and make them come back with the signs later.
Yeah, basically, we're, we're splitting up the major amendment into two different paths. Now maybe they could meet up ultimately to go to council. It depends on the timing, but most likely not.
I think that's, if you're not going to go with our recommendation part, I think that's the best route.
So, but in your recommendation report, part of that is that you do not approve the increase in signage square footage?
Correct.
Correct, so lay that part over.
Just lay that part over.
Split them, split them, yeah.
I got it.
Make a motion that.
Okay, city staff withdraws the layover recommendation. City staff would recommend approval of the major amendment to the Pine Creek mixed-use development agreement pertaining to the reduction in FAR only, subject to submit all five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to city council. Staff recommends layover of the major amendment to the Pine Creek mixed-use development agreement pertaining to the increase in signage.
I will make that motion.
As he said it. If you could say, make the motion subject as staff.
Yeah, make, I'll make the motion subject to the staff's recommendation.
Okay, second. We're good? All right, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Who did the second?
The second?
Patrick.
Okay, so Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
For agenda number twenty-nine, it's recommended that I, thank you, Richard.
We'll coordinate after, Richard.
For agenda item number twenty-nine, it's recommended that I recuse myself. I will leave the, the meeting and turn it over to Dave Rosacker.
Okay. Please note that the chairman has left the room. We'll now proceed to agenda item number twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty-nine. Case number C ten dash twenty-two dash one forty-eight, C seven dash twenty-two dash one forty-seven. Applicants Lynn Wallen Ziganbine in request for his approval of a NCE Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement District, along with approval of a conditional use permit for outdoor entertainment in the Makerhood NCE District. The location is northeast of the Twelfth Street and Millwork Avenue. May we hear from the applicant?
Certainly, I know we're getting towards, towards the end of the trail here, so I don't wanna, I don't want this to be heavy calculus, but it, it is a pretty big area and this is kind of a unique district. I have Jason Valinsky and Ms. Ziganbine here to answer some questions. We're pretty excited about Douglas Dreeson, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Thanks for that reminder. We're pretty excited about breathing some new life into this area. It's right north of the baseball park and right east of the Makerhood, which seems to have been pretty successful. This will hopefully complement those two things. We've got all kinds of fancy pictures and so forth, but again, I know you guys are at the end of kind of a long meeting. I'm sure the staff's prepped you pretty well. So I think we'll just humbly ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing none, then are there any opponents? Hearing none, we will close the public portion and get a recommendation from staff.
Yeah, so city staff has, has worked with the applicant for quite some time on this, so we're excited that we've actually hit the planning board. You know, it's, we're very comfortable with the proposed NCE plan. Staff has been involved with forming that document as well with their input on what they would like to see. Basically, the NCE plan, two of the large things that it does, it modifies the use types. This site is zone-heavy industrial, but what the NCE plan mostly does is incorporates office and commercial uses that typically require use permits. We have adjusted the, the use types with this NCE plan so that most of those are permitted outright. So it's kind of a combination of office, commercial, and industrial uses that are allowed. There are still a handful of uses that require either a conditional or a special use permit, and that's why we have the, the outdoor entertainment for the conditional use permit on the agenda today. One other thing that the NCE plan does is it modifies parking and it takes a look at the entire boundaries of the site and, and the area. You know, a lot of our industrial users have less parking requirements and the office commercial have more parking requirements. So we're, we're kind of mending and molding those two for a ratio of one stall per thousand square feet of gross floor area of building space. This area is designated in the downtown mixed-use area, so theoretically, you could support CBD zoning, which does not have any parking requirements at all. So we are very comfortable with the ratio that's being proposed. And there's a combination of paved parking lots as well as others that are unpaved. Many of those have been there for a long time, but we wanna make sure that parking is on paved surfaces in the appropriate places. So that is important to, important to the city. Specifically for the conditional use permit of outdoor entertainment, we're comfortable with the proposed operating statement. There are limitations on, on sound for these gatherings that they are interested in having, whether it's, you know, for an art fair, festival, or something of that nature. There's one small change that's needed for the operating statement referencing chapter fifty-five, not chapter seventeen, and the applicant has already provided that information to us. But I'll still recommend the, the conditions as stated in the report. So unless you have any questions, staff recommends approval of the NCE plan for Makerhood and approval of the conditional use permit to allow outdoor entertainment in the NCE boundary subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Thank you, Eric. Any further comments from the board or do we have a recommendation?
I move approval of the NCE Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement District Plan for the Makerhood and approval of the conditional use permit to allow outdoor entertainment in the NCE boundary subject to the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
Second. May we record the vote?
Uh, Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove five zero.
Thank you very much.
Looks like a nice deal.
You've been fired.
Been fired?
Okay. Final agenda item is thirty-two, case C eight dash twenty-two dash one twenty-three, C eight dash twenty-two dash one twenty-four. Applicant Ravi LLC, request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living and transitional living in the LC District. Location, twenty-one ten Papillion Parkway.
May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Sydney Huss with Klein Williams at one-two-nine-one-ten Pierce Street on behalf of Ravi LLC. Ravi intends to lease this property to the Developmental Disability Center of Nebraska, who will use it to provide residential daycare and vocational services to developmentally disabled children and adults. And so that's the purpose for our request for a special use permit. I do have Bethany Johnson here with me today. She is the executive director of the DDCN, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sydney. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so on the agenda, we do have two uses listed, one of those being transitional living. The agenda had been advertised, but since that time, we have received additional information that the transitional living use type is not applicable, so that has been withdrawn. So that's why that's not part of the recommendation. You know, the, the submittal was very thorough, which is reflective in the operating statement and also in the staff recommendation report. So I think it's, it's very clear on the different phases that the facility is proposing. It, it's a, it's a great operation and definitely a need that we, we need in our community. So there's just a small item of landscaping that'll have to be submitted before proceeding to city council. So we can work with the applicant to, to get that information. Staff recommends approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the LC District subject to the five conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
With approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the LC District. Subject to the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
I think that's the last, yeah, thank you for coming down and waiting so long. Do we have a motion on last month's meet, minutes for the pre-meeting and the public meeting?
Pre-meeting and public meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
We have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.